All right, what's up everybody? Come on into the Rooted and Progress Dream Center.
This evening.
Nighttime edition.
Yes, yes, yes.
The, what do they call it? The red light special? No?
Not too late. Too early, too early for the red light special. Or we can say the quiet storm, yeah.
Oh, the quiet storm. Let's not say that.
Let's just say the evening edition, we'll stick with that.
Welcome to Rooted and Progress, everybody.
Yes.
It's your co-host, Deanne King for Terrence Middlebrooks. At 5:00 PM on a Tuesday.
Tuesday. Turn up on a Tuesday.
Going up on a Tuesday. Here we go.
Yeah, guys, we just got, we have a lot of information to just get out to you guys.
We do.
And this is the reason why we're here.
Yes, and here's what we're gonna do. We have a lot of candidates. I've been saying this for the last month and a half. There are a million and forty candidates running for District 5 seat for Tampa City Council. It's not a million and forty, but it's close. It's about fourteen. So, we are doing specialized episodes to make sure that we account for all of the candidates who are running so that we can give them a platform to talk to the people, talk to the community and ensure and make sure that you all are informed voters, because you're gonna get out and vote.
And there's gonna be a record number of you to get out and vote this go round.
All right, so let's do it.
Speaking into existence.
We have candidate Elvis Pigott Senior Pastor Elvis, who is joining us live today on this good evening. How you doing?
I'm absolutely wonderful. How about you all?
That was, that was a wonderful applause there Pastor Elvis.
It was. I sure appreciate all the people back there that really celebrates my existence.
Wrap up one of your services, right? Your sermons and just get that standing ovation.
All throughout, all throughout the sermon.
Well, listen, hey, we are happy to have you back. We appreciate you working with us. And we want people to know if you're tuning in live right now, please, please be engaged. Drop questions if you have for Elvis, particularly because if elected, he will be representing us, you, so.
When elected, I will be representing you.
All right, well, thank you. So, ask your questions away. So, let's just get straight to it. Tell the people about you personally, about your upbringing, who Elvis is.
Well, that's a good question. Thank you all. Also to Terrence, it's a privilege and a pleasure to be back.
Thank you, man.
I could tell you that I've had an absolute wonderful, wonderful time running, but I've been pastoring here in Hillsborough County for nineteen years. Very excited about the work that we've done in our community. Most of all, the work that we've done throughout with our young people and in our city advocating for right and making sure things is getting done. Grew up, went to Middleton High School in 2002. It was a brand new school. I wanted to go see the brand new school. And so then went back over to King and traveled there. King even had a little bit of time over at Chamberlain. That tells you I was a very energetic young man. Went to Greco Middle School, also River Hills Elementary and Temple Terrace Elementary. And so, again, my energy was absolutely exciting. And so, I just really have always been in the community, always advocating for things to get done, but most of all advocating to see progress within our district. And so, have a two-year-old, my little junior, he's my look-alike. Every day, he looks like he's growing up to be identical to me.
You can't deny him.
Excited about it. I mean, he's absolutely everything about me. And it, 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 it just blesses me every day. So, I'm excited to have this opportunity to run. As many would know, that I ran for school board in 2024. And so, I've enjoyed that journey and the purpose of running is for school board was just to be able to be a voice for our District 5 schools and try to do all we can to make sure that our students aren't left behind. And so now, they may ask the question, why city council?
Yeah.
And I will always say to them, we have to remember that a failing school is a reflection of a failing community. And so, if you really want to get schools to the place they care, we have to make sure that we can stop our students from having to change schools from one school to another due to mothers cannot afford rent within our city, jobs, two and three jobs, they can't participate. And so, I wanna come and do all I can to make sure that we can leave the city council District 5 in a better place than we found it.
District 5 is a huge district here in Hillsborough County Pastor. Are you prepared to represent every parts of every community in District 5?
Most definitely. I'm prepared to do what we've done up until this very moment, and that's go from one end to the other. And that's talking to the constituents and asking them their desire. Because it's very diverse and it's very unique. You have the Channel Side, you have the E-Boy, you have the Tampa Hikes, you have the downtown area. But what I do believe, everything in me, that District 5 has been represented. What haven't been represented is the East Tampa and the Suffer Springs area. And I think that we have to be intentional and make sure that the representation go throughout District 5 and not just stop at the corridors of downtown.
What's missing in those, in those areas in Suffer Springs? What, what do you think is lacking where you think you can fill that gap?
A proper development, right? Development that's gonna come in and make it nice, nice grocery stores. And we realize that the publics won't come in no area. They come in areas predicated off of the income. And so, we wanna make sure that we can get economic development, get these people within our areas jobs, good jobs, that they can have a decent life and can be able to afford to see the rise of our community, but stay within our community because the jobs make it match where they're at. Suffer Springs has been neglected forever. This is not a new issue. This is a issue that is just every time we get in the seat and there's a representative in District 5, I believe they often forget the people that put them there and start becoming to that place where we rub elbows and become friends and, and do all these other things that is, that's popular. But really helping East Tampa and Suffer Springs may not be popular, but necessary because they're voters.
Wow. I mean, when you look at what you want to get done, what are your top priorities? Or more so, what do you think as a whole? You mentioned the neighborhoods, but what as a whole is District 5 lacking and what do they need? Like, who do they need on council right now?
I believe District 5 need a champion. They need an advocate. They need someone that is all right with speaking truth, even if it's unpopular. They need someone that will be willing to go against the odds and not just go alone to get alone. They need someone that really have lived the district and lived to understand that the real reality, when we talk about crime, it goes back to jobs. When we talk about young people that's in the streets, it goes back to jobs. When it comes down to young people, again, that when we talk about this and we talk, it goes to affordable housing. When I'm elected, I will champion. Before I even ran for office, when the mayor race had came about in the beginning, I talked with all candidates about what can we do about getting jobs for young people and get young people off of the streets. If the truth be told, we have to keep in mind that you cannot expect crime to go down when people are yet hungry in the streets. We have to deal with the issue and make sure that we can get proper development, that people can go and be proud when they walk out of their door. They're proud at what they see. I pull up to some of these schools and ask myself, how do they expect kids to be excited to learn in some of the environments that look very dilapidated? But yet, you go to some other schools and it's beautiful. They have good grass. The buildings is painted nicely. And they come in expired and ready to learn. I think we have to make sure that we do the same in our areas. And that's what I'll champion and fight for. Making sure that when you go into District 5 in East Tampa, when you go that little corridor of West Tampa, when you go to Suffer Springs, these people will be proud. Some of our elected officials won't even walk the streets of Suffer Springs. But yet, we can still constantly neglect what's there. We need to fix it.
Yeah, so you, you're looking to try to bring all these communities together. And what's your vision on the economic impact of District 5?
I would like to see, when, when you, when we deal with District 5, and as we often talk about District 5, people really say is, you know, well, look at Channel Side, look at these things. And I think that could be a model for District 5. It's within District 5.
Right.
When you look in District 5, you get to see what it looks like. And, and you get to see what it looks like for people to work, live and play in the same area. They can walk. They don't have to worry about transportation. They walk across the street to their offices and they come back in and they walk over to the yardhouse and get them some good food and, and hang out. And I'm just trying to figure out why the example which we've already put in East Tampa is into District 5, is not spread it throughout District 5, that we can all have that. What do it look like for a Channel Side downtown atmosphere to be in East Tampa, to be in West Tampa, to be in Suffer Springs where they can actually have good jobs, work, eat and play right in the area where they was raised?
So, I'm gonna be real, right? So, I know something that I hear often, especially about Suffer Springs particularly, you have the gang that's in Suffer Springs, right? And there's a lot of beef with other neighborhoods with the Suffer Springs gang. So, is it that we need to attack maybe a criminal issue that's happening in that community that will attract more people to that community? How do, how do, how do we deal with that issue? Being one of the main things when I hear about Suffer Springs, people are talking about the gang activity.
And, and I, great question. When I go to Suffer Springs and we deal with the gang activity, it goes back to poverty. It's parvished. Look at the area.
Yeah.
That's all they got. It's nothing more. And I think when you start putting things there.
Resources.
That will absolutely deal with where they are. You get a different mindset. We, when we talk about community policing, let's build it. Let's not neglect it, but let's build it up and hold them accountable. I expect to hold the community accountable to say at the end of the day, we can build nice things, but what we've had is we're not going to build nice things because they don't want nice things. No, the taxpayers pay for nice things. We want nice things. Now, use your policing to make sure we keep nice things, because that's sixty percent of our budget. Surely, some of it can go over there.
Well, that's, let's get on the same page. How do we get the community and the police, the policing on the same page where we can find trust on both sides?
Just being appropriate, right? I just believe that law enforcement.
And I believe also being present.
Absolutely. Being present, not just when there's a crime.
Yes.
But being present to celebrate. I've seen in, in credit to TPD and in credit to Hillsborough County Sheriff Office, I've seen law enforcement show up to birthday parties. What do it look like when the police has got a noise complaint because there's a birthday party going on? And instead of they getting out, flexing their muscle, they get out and join the party. Come out, say happy birthday, enjoy, have a good time with the community, introduce themselves as being present and get back in their cars and say, hey, we're here to make sure if you need anything, we're here to support you.
You mentioned the budget, and the city is actually already having conversations about the budget. The budget more than likely going to be passed if you were to be elected or whenever that seat is filled. So, how do you get these things accomplished if you're talking about a budget that has already been passed?
I believe the things that's gonna be already in the budget, and this budget will be passed by the time we take that seat, by the time I take that seat, because I ain't, ain't too many people. By the time I take that seat, I believe the budget will be passed. And I think what's important is making sure that we can have that conversation, that the things that's in the budget to get done. There's a lot of things that's already in the budget. It's a lot of things that has already been promised, that's already obligated there. We just need to make sure, you know, follow it through, get it done. We realize that the mayor administration will be in charge of the budget. They can do what they wanna do when they get ready. But I'm gonna stand on him and, and pop, and, and people may not believe it, I'm gonna say this. I don't believe that our mayor is intentionally neglecting certain areas. I believe that at the end of the day, when you go to city council, you have everybody championing their area. The problem, the real hindrance to District 5 has been the District 5 seat. Who is willing to champion and stick to it until things get done? We jump on all these other projects and we forget about our own. Let's, every, I don't care. You check those councilmen's records. They focus on the area and they're focusing constantly champion the things that the people sent them there to do. And District 5 representatives need to do the same.
Well, let's go back to, you talked about affordable housing. Talk about the agenda and what does that look like? What does affordable housing look like in District 5?
I think what that really.
And I'm sorry, let me add this to it. And for those people who have been there for generations, keeping them in that community, those communities without having to move out south of Tampa, you know, way out north, northeast of Tampa, where there's so-called more affordable housing.
I'll say it just like this. Terrence, the CRA has failed East Tampa community. The CRA has failed us. I often hear candidate mention the creating of this CRA twenty years ago, and it's gonna be in these twenty years, it'd be the largest CRA in Florida. East Tampa CRA is the largest. CRA has failed African-American community, hands down, because everyone has been able to take from the pot, but the people that has actually put in the pot. And I've never seen nobody build a house with someone else's bank account. But that's what took place over and over again. These people are moving out of their homes and forced out of their homes because they can't keep the homes up. There are storms like now coming that has already came, that now people are moving out of their homes again, selling it for whatever they can get. When there's a CRA that they should be able to go to, to get these funds to beautify their home, to restore their home. I remember when they came out with the grant that the East Tampa community can get a certain amount of money to chop the trees down from over their home. And you can count on your hand how many community people, African-Americans, that actually got the money to actually get it done. Shame, shame, shame. If the CRA is there and is not working for the people, what's the purpose of having it? Because CRA East Tampa, and let's not be, be fooled. District 5 CRA, all of these CRAs here, and you still see how people could come, developers could come and sell their pitch and say what they're gonna do and get the CRA money to build something and put three to four homes and then called it affordable, while they get it because we gave them five million, we gave them ten million to do all of these projects. But yet, homegrown community parents or senior citizens in our area got to go take out second mortgages to get their roof fixed on their house. And the CRA is supposed to be there to address those issues. When I'm the next councilman, I can promise our senior citizens and those that we want to secure the legacy of these homes, that we gonna remove that red tape and get it back to the place where it should be. CRA should be working for East Tampa. That's why it's the East Tampa CRA.
Okay, yeah. It, it, I feel like there's so many things facing District 5, because it is so vast. Like you, like you said, like you could go from someone in a gang on the street, can't pay for rent.
Yeah.
All the way to somebody living in the addition in a five million dollar condo, right? And so, there's like a vast, a vast spectrum of who is in District 5. And I think for me, when, when we're hearing and we're getting feedback from people in the community, they're, they're kind of feeling like what you're saying, right? You get someone who's in that seat and they're thinking of all these other ideas, all these other agendas that they might have or what's in their ear. But at the end of the day, we know sitting on council, it's all about collaboration. So, for folks who do not know, right? When you're on city council, it's not just up to Elvis to make the world a better place.
Absolutely.
He needs three other people to be along with him. So, what's your plan on collaborating with those councilmen? Do you already have council members, rather? Do you already have working relationships with them? How do you plan on getting the majority vote?
I talk to those councilmen all the time.
Okay.
Whenever there's an issue.
Are y'all good?
We're, we're, I don't have one councilman on that desk that, that I have any, as they would say, no beef with.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with all of them there.
Okay, okay.
You know, and I think that, again, what is really shocking, and I'm, I'm gonna stand on a limb and says, I don't believe no councilman or councilwoman that's there is not willing to see East Tampa, Suffer Springs and different parts of District 5 better. I think that the focus has changed when you get the person sitting in the seat.
Okay.
If the person sitting in District 5 seat is not fighting for its own, then they're not agreeing with anything neither.
Okay.
You need someone that will be willing to stand up and stay true to the reason they're in that seat. And that's to see District 5, East Tampa, Suffer Springs, look the same as the other part of our district. And so, I think the real reality is we get in the seat. We have to be careful not to elect someone that will get in the seat because they wanna hang out with the people in Channel Side and forget about the people in Suffer Springs. We need some people that would be all right with understanding and have felt the infirmities of the people in East Tampa and Suffer Springs, but know how to go to churches on Tuesday and get that two-piece, but also know how to go to Ruth Chris and eat as well. You got to be, someone has to be there that is comfortable with real change and not wanting to make a name for themselves by fitting in with those that don't wanna see change.
This is a question I asked, and I presented it to every other candidate, every candidate that we've had on, on our show. There's been talk that the Rays stadium could be built in District, build in District 5, built in District 5. So, what's your take on that? What's your take on at that point, there has to, gonna be, there's gonna be development, there's gonna be land, there's gonna be purchased, and that means perhaps some residents may lose their homes.
You're talking about the Rays stadium?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that stadium, most likely, if it come to Tampa, it's gonna be in District 5.
Are you for it or against it?
I am absolutely for it.
Okay.
Under certain conditions.
What are the conditions?
That condition is that, that community benefit agreement. When that Rays stadium come, it will be a mandate that I would strongly advocate and hope that three other councilmen agree with me, that we need to make sure that the development understands that the people in District 5 need to benefit from employment, how, hiring, contracting, all of that. We need to have a certain percentage of that development directly delegated to District 5.
Okay.
And if we cannot bring people in, if it's going to bring a burden on the district where people is getting pushed out and people are still not getting any jobs, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to turn around and change our mind.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to. I just wanna agree with it.
What if, but what if it's not even a matter of being pushed out? What if it's a matter of no longer being able to pay a bill? So, what if, what if taxpayers see an increase? So, the people of District 5 see an increase in their taxes, see an increase or percentage of whatever is now going to, to build this Rays stadium, and now the bill is on them?
And I think that is something, that is something that we'll have to look at. We'll have to bring all those things to the table, because I believe that if the Rays stadium is built, there's gonna be some subsidies somehow from the city, that we're gonna be getting CRA subsidies. Somehow, they're gonna get money from everywhere. Those same taxpayers that's gonna be pushed out due to the increase are the same ones that's pouring into for them to be, for they can have an increase. I think some way, we gonna have to figure out what that looks like and have some subsidies for those homeowners to make sure that we can offset those costs.
Right.
And see what we can do to keep people in homes. The real direct benefit, no matter what happened, is to make sure people stay in their homes in District 5. It is absolutely unfair for us to look and be all right with seeing generation of wealth being absolutely sabotaged by development. When grandma and all them leave these homes that have worked sweat, blood and tears to pay thirty years and forty years in their homes, and now we see children can't afford taxes or things is happening and they're losing homes. We need to figure a way that we can turn those properties into rentals, we can, whatever we need to do to make sure people stay in their properties, as well as making sure people don't lose their properties that's not no longer in their properties. We'll have to get it done. But it all goes back to being a listener, sitting at the table and being transparent with the district you serve. We can't have private conversations and not expose our district to it. It's unfair to them.
Well, before we wrap Pastor, let's just say, you win this election, what's the first thing is on your priority list when you, when you take office?
First thing I think that I would do is I win on September ninth.
Ooh, no runoff.
No runoff. Lord help us. The power. Hallelujah. I, I, I win on September ninth, no runoff. Or, oh, next thing happen is we go and we go back to these communities and hear the concerns that I've already heard a lot of them express. Go back to these neighborhood associations first and give my gratitude and thank you for their support. But most of all, begin to start building coalitions in our community, find out how we can get to work. Seeing those things that's in that budget of what District 5 should be looking forward to. And I would think that my first meeting as an elected councilman would be with our mayor. Our mayor and myself, I would be scheduling that meeting with her chief of staff expeditiously. That would be the first thing on my, on my, on my meeting.
So, how can people follow you, support you as you, as they march to the polls? Is that September eighth, ninth?
I want, I want, I want the people right now, vote by mail is out. They are at their kitchen tables. You got that ballot at your kitchen table. You got that ballot sitting over there by that microwave. You got that ballot.
Still be in the mailbox if you live your life like me.
Oh, Lord, if it's still in the mailbox.
My mailbox see me about every four months.
You got that vote by mail. I want you to get that vote by mail and I want you to go ahead and bubble in that one name, Elvis Pigott. And you go ahead and send it on back. But I want you to follow me. You can look at our website at electelvis.com. You will be able to see all of our, our platform and our layout. And so, I would really love your support. If you have any concerns, feel free to email me. It is my last name Pigott, my first name Elvis at gmail dot com. And if you need any direct conversation, please give me a call at eight one three, eight five eight one eight one seven. Let's make it, let's make no mistake. It has been very clear. This district, it, we have, it's the text of Bible as I would close. It said, weeping may endure for a night. We have been weeping in District 5 for a long time. But on September ninth, if you come on out and vote Elvis Pigott, there will be joy that shall come in the morning. And I believe we're in process of joy.
That is straight from the pastor. Do you hear me?
The doors of the church are now open, ladies and gentlemen. Pastor, thank you so much.
It has been a pleasure. Thank you. And thank you for coming back. We wish you all the best.
I appreciate you guys having me.
And, and, and we will, we will look forward to having you again, maybe even in another capacity.
Yes, hopefully I can come on in and ask the councilman. And if not, y'all just bring me on back just to hang out with you. Ain't nobody, ain't, ain't nobody like y'all.
Hey, man, nobody, nobody. Thank you for that promo.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys so much.
Man, so much energy, especially, can I, can we, testimony real quick?
Let's go. I just said the doors of the church are open.
He has a forum that he's actually late to.
Yes.
For coming on and speaking to the people. Oh, he also just white with the church cloth, by the way. He did have a church cloth, like the pastor cloth, y'all know what I'm talking about? That they always got. And it just come out.
Straight out, yeah.
Do you, do you wonder how many washcloths the pastor has?
Have to go through, absolutely.
Oh.
How many handkerchiefs?
How many?
Handkerchiefs?
How many?
Yeah.
Man, that washing machine, a washing machine, hate to see a pastor's washcloth coming.
They gonna have the matching socks to match the handkerchiefs. That's a good old Southern Baptist pastor right there, so.
It sure is. Hey, we gonna keep this thing going. All of our folks who are listening in live, if you are just joining us, again, we have another candidate who just sat down. We getting them suited and booted right now. We got Albert Cook coming up to the microphone. Please ask questions. If you have questions for the candidates, this is, this for y'all. I live in Hillsborough County.
Right.
This is for y'all. So, please make sure y'all are informed and making sure that you, you know what you're doing, whether you are voting early, whether you are showing up to the polls on September ninth. Please, please, please make sure that you are just doing what you can. We good to bring, bring our guy in? Oh, no, the microphone falling. Here we go. All right, we gonna get this together. We are. Hello, Mr. Cook?
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good. How you doing? Bring our guy in, Terrence. How you doing today?
I'm doing fantastic.
Well, we appreciate you for joining us.
It's amazing to meet you in person again.
We met? Oh, that's so embarrassing when that happens.
Well, you were a guest speaker or MC, so I happened to be in the audience. So, yeah, so I admired you from afar.
That sounds about right. People are like, oh, you hosted something. I'm like, child, probably don't even remember what event it was. Um, congratulations to you, one, taking this step, running for city council. I just wanna tell the people a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name is Albert Cook. I've lived in District 5 for quite some time. Well, I have a short story to tell you.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, um, one day, my neighborhood was, there's a lot of problems in my neighborhood. And I kept calling the police, kept calling the police, and I actually went to a few meetings where the police were giving lectures about how to deal with this. So, I was sitting on my porch and it's like twenty people hanging out, and I was about to call again, and I had an epiphany. I said, they're not the problem, I'm the problem. Yeah, so I got involved. So, I had been going to neighborhood association meetings. Then I picked up the frequency and then I actually joined a neighborhood association and was elected to the Neighborhood Association Board.
Okay.
While I was on the board, I was awarded the TPD Everyday Hero Award, which was fantastic because I hadn't won an award in quite some time.
Congratulations, yeah.
And what that award signifies is it's a, a person in the community who works with TPD and the neighborhood to improve the community any way that they can. So, it's an honor to get that.
Yeah.
Once I received that award, I was actually appointed to the Citizen Review Board by, by the mayor. And then from there, I was appointed to the Chief's Advisory Panel.
Is that during this current administration?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is all, you know, the last few years.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I was appointed to the Chief's Advisory Panel. That's the panel that replaced the Citizen Review Board.
Got it.
And I'm, I'm, I am now currently chairman of that, of that panel. And I'm also. And I'm also on the, uh, city council citizens budget and finance, it's long. Advisory committee, so we actually analyze the budget and, uh, make recommendations to the city council. And now I'm, I decided to go ahead and, and make a run for, uh, city council and hopefully I can make a change when I'm elected.
When did you decide? You kinda entered the race a little, not, like, not like super last minute, but not a long time ago.
No, it wasn't. Um, I actually sat down with a, um, actually I had a telephone consultation with a political consultant here in Tampa. And we were, uh, talking and, um, he let me know how much money you needed to actually run for this office.
It was more than I thought. I don't think people know this. It's almost five thousand dollars.
Oh, that was just to get in the game. I'm talking about, uh, uh, marketing, I'm talking about all the other stuff, see, you're just talking about getting in the game. So when I sat down with him, uh, it wasn't just talking about, um, uh, qualifying, it's called, to become a candidate. But it was more about what happens afterwards, okay? So, uh, social media, um, signage, marketing, all this other stuff, and the number was, was, I was like, wow, there's no way that that's what it is. And I said, okay, I have this amount, I'm gonna go for it. Two weeks in, I said, oh, boy, he might be right. I was like, oh, boy. So what, it's just like anything else, when you deal with a, a family budget or a household budget, you budget. And you make the best you can out of what you have. So that's what I've been doing. To tell you that this is an amazing, amazing run. I can't, no one can understand what it, what it is to run for office until you're in it.
Oh, I couldn't imagine. I could not imagine. Were you not taken aback by how many people are already in the race at the time in which you decided to run?
Well, it was building, so when I got in, I think I was, uh, number eight. So I wasn't last.
We had already scheduled our candidates for, you know, leading up to September ninth or even September fourth. Here we got four or five others that just joined the race. So my question to you, uh, Mr. Cook, is why now, why so late?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Um, well, it was, it was the information I got from the consultant. And he was telling me numbers and telling me things and I was saying, well, in, in my history, my personal history, when people tell me something, I gotta learn my, for myself. I always, I've always been like that way. So if you tell me something, I have to go ahead and study it and understand it myself. So I made it, I finally made the decision to say, hey, look, everything I've done so far has been building up to this point.
Was it something that you had on your mind where you felt that the job that you had done, it was bigger?
Yes, exactly. Uh, one thing I do want to tell you, as a chairman of the chief's advisory panel, I actually sit on the oral board interview panel. That's a police interior panel that actually interviews people who want to become a police officers. So I've done, I've been participated in over three hundred of these interviews. So all these things building and I'm like, Albert, what, what are you doing? You know, it's built up to this. Yeah, so just go for it.
With your background in policing, um, what are your thoughts on the current, where our police, where the Tampa Police Department is right now? Where do you think we need to improve? And, and how, and what's your stance on community policing?
Um, community policing has really made a big change in our community. Um, I, I, I always wanted to say this and I'm glad, um, you brought me on so I can say something. Um, there's, there's statements in our community that just don't make sense to me. Uh, snitches get stitches. How can you change a neighborhood?
Example, snitches get stitches, right?
So how can you change a neighborhood if you're not, it, I don't wanna say informing. I'm trying to think of a better word. There you go, communicating with authorities so that we can change a neighborhood. But I, I, I had an, I was thinking the other day and I said, well, who is the person saying if snitches get stitches?
The gangs.
The, the, the local residents are the ones that say.
And it's the people with the power. I mean, we just talked about this, gang activity, people, let me tell y'all something. That I, that I can't say on a normal platform, on the news, on television. Half these, uh, police reports we get in our email. Where people get killed and I go out in the community, it's because it's gang versus gang. It's a gang issue that's going on. It's beef that's happening between the gangs in our community and people wanna act like Tampa ain't got no gangs, but we do. And so when you're, when you're set, when you're so involved especially. Knowing that we do have gang issues, how do we solve this problem? What would you do if elected?
Well, as, uh, sitting on the panel where I'm actually interviewing candidates, I'm looking for people who have, uh, uh, critical and logical thinking. So that when something does happen or when they go out into the community, they, they can talk about things logically. And logic is something that can bring, um, calm to whatever situation because now you're not reacting out of emotion. So those are the people that, um, I wanna bring on. But it's, it's deeper than that. It's about the community working together. We have to work together. Look, I live in VME Board, so, um, I don't know if you know that area. Yeah, it, it, that whole area is going through a change. And what happens is you have people who are doing things openly. Well, you have to identify that to the police. And the great thing about, uh, TPD is, um, so if you call about something happening, uh, illegal activity, you think that they're not doing anything. Oh, yes, they are. So they're sending undercover folks around. They have stakeouts, they have a whole bunch of stuff that's going around in the background. And I started learning those things as I got more involved with the police.
Wow, I, I, I've, I've learned about that too, Terrence. My friend, her, her husband is with TPD. And that man being like a Nissan Altima. In plain clothes. Hey, y'all better watch out for the Nissan Altima. You heard it here first, I'm rooting for progress. The Nissan Altima is not for the week.
You see a lot of these unmarked cars, you know, back in the day, it used to be a police car with no type of print or writing on it.
Y'all young, so you gotta remember the Crown Vic.
So we, we, we understand there's, there's a level of, of law enforcement or I can tell at least from your platform that you are keen on making sure our neighborhoods are safe and utilizing and, and keeping an eye on our police department. What are some of the other things on your agenda that you were, uh, that you would like to do and accomplish if you were elected?
Um, definitely, um, I think that everybody in our community, uh, deserves safe, affordable housing. A good job. And not only a good job, but good wages. Look, folks, if you're making sixteen dollars an hour, when I was a kid, I, I started at two dollars and seventy-five cents. But I was living at home. Living at home. So, um, that was, I was sixteen or something like that and I actually had a paper route before that, so I've been working since I've been twelve. You know, generating some kind of income. And, um, and then I, I was on the job for about three weeks and then they raised the minimum wage to three dollars and ten cents. Let me tell you something, nobody could touch me. I was making three dollars and ten cents. But now I'm looking at today and where we are and, um, uh, uh, and where we are and you're making sixteen dollars an hour. When I first heard that, I was like, wow, that's a lot of money. Well, in reality. Um, I went into Publix the other day and this is not a knock on Publix because I'm sure it's happening in the other, uh, supermarkets. And I was actually talking to a, a relative of mine and, um, he was talking about steak. And I haven't had a steak in a long time. I've been trying to cut back. I've been trying to cut back, you know, as you get older, y'all know. Your doctor's gonna come to you one day and say, hey, you gotta cut back on the red meat. And I'm giving you, I'm, I give you some advice, do it. So my nephew was talking.
Do it while you're young.
There you go.
We had this conversation, so, you know.
So I was talking to, uh, my nephew and we were talking about steak and I said, look, you know something, I'm gonna go buy a steak and throw it on the grill. So I go on the Publix. Hey, let me finish my story before you start making comments. So I went to the, uh, went to Publix and I said, wow, I saw this nice ribeye. I was like, man, that looks good. And I didn't wanna get anything big, so it was like, uh, point eight of a pound, so eighty percent of a pound. Twenty dollars. It was nineteen dollars and change and I had to make a decision. And, you know, uh, uh, I'm a, I'm a small, I'm a businessman, so I can afford that, but I still have to say to myself, do I wanna spend twenty dollars on this little steak? So I went ahead and bought it anyway, tenderized it, threw it on the grill, it was fantastic. But, I mean, I'm saying to myself, if I was making sixteen dollars an hour and I had a wife and two kids, I can't even go into that lane. Yeah, I have to go get chicken.
And a certain kind of chicken, it can't be a wing.
Oh, no, no, you gotta get the thigh and the leg.
That twenty pack of wings is twenty dollars, twenty-six, twenty-eight dollars.
Actually, you go to, you go to Sam's Club and the wings are ridiculous there. You're just buying a bunch, but they're still expensive. But I, I, I like the dark meat, so that's a little bit cheaper than everything else.
You talk about jobs in our, in this community. What does that look like? Like dive deeper into bringing jobs to the community. What, what, what does, what does that mean?
Well, um, we all have different opinions, but so, um, what I'm thinking is, and, um, I'm gonna say a dirty word and everybody's gonna say, what's he talking about? Or maybe I might catch some ears, tariff. Well, the tariff is, is driving some of our prices up and I'm okay with that because I understand what the man is trying to do. Why don't we take advantage of that? We need to start thinking globally. So we need to let the world know that Tampa Bay and District Three is open and available for manufacturing jobs. And I'm gonna give you an example in a minute, that just, something that just happened. So we need to bring them in and we need to make any kind of, um, a tax incentive, land incentive. We need to make sure that they're coming and that, more importantly, that they're responsible and they're community oriented. But more importantly, we need to let the world know that here in D three, we have hardworking, intelligent, reliable workforce that has earned the right to higher wages and greater benefits. But I wanna give you a perfect example. Um, and I didn't know about this and I've talked to some other people that, uh, are LinkedIn and they didn't know about it as well. Um, just recently, um, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, outside of D three, um, Israel opened up a, um, manufacturing plant. And what they're gonna manufacture is drones and they're gonna hire a hundred and fifty people over the next three years. Now, I'm not talking about Israel because that's a whole nother issue. I'm talking about the point that that plant came and D three had no idea. You see what I'm saying? See, this is the, this is the thing that I wanna bring to the table.
And by D three, you mean District Three, for those listening.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I keep saying. And, uh, actually, I made a mistake. I, it's, uh, yeah, so, but anyway, so they're on the outside. So why aren't they coming into our area and looking at what we have to offer? Yeah, we can actually do the same things as everybody else. So why can't we get a good job? Why can't we have good wages? Why can't we have, um, uh, great benefits? The problem, all the, all the symptoms that we have in, in, in our district is this, it all revolves around income. So if the more money that you can make, then you can get a house, create generational wealth. See, that's what we have to start looking at. We need to start focusing on, 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 uh, economic growth in the neighborhood and make sure when people are coming in and they wanna be a part of our community, we're glad to have them. But look, you gotta have a better wage than sixteen dollars an hour.
And I think it goes back. I think you hit on some very, very important topics. Talk about how important education is in all of that. Because you, if you don't have education or at least understanding financial literacy in, in everything that you mentioned, the, the, the ball's gonna get thrown right over your head when it comes down to having this drone plant built in our community. Well, guess who's gonna get those jobs? It won't be the people from those low income communities that's gonna get them without the proper education and the facilities to.
Exactly. I agree with you one hundred percent, but representing the community is what I'm about. So if I know that plant is coming in, I'm talking to, directly to them saying, hey, I'm on city council. This is my area. These are my people. We have to make sure that we get these jobs. Because what I always look at is, I would love for us to have manufacturing plants in our area where people can walk to work. You know, that's a, it's a lost thing. We don't, nobody does that anymore. Ride a bike to work, you know? When, when it's hot out, I get, you know, like that, but when it gets fall or winter, shoot, you can just put on a little jacket and walk to work. That would be so cool. But to get back to education, we have to always, the only way that you can improve your lifestyle is through education and training and knowledge. Now, of course, financial training is very important, but there's a lot of folks in our community that are willing to teach you. Yeah, because.
But you have to have access to those resources and know that those resources are available.
That's big and that's communication. See, that's one of the issues that we have is, uh, communicating some of the great programs that we have. Um, the CDC, um, they have tons of programs. Um, I was actually talking to someone the other day over there and they, uh, were saying that they have jobs and not enough people to fill them. Well, guess what kind of jobs they are?
The high education.
They're construction jobs. So you're outside sweating, lifting, toting, whatever. But my thing is, and I come from, uh, my dad was, uh, was an immigrant from Jamaica. So you know how Jamaicans are, man. My dad had a job and a business. So I know about that. But look, you have to get out and you have to start working and then you have to start going to school. You gotta start educating yourself. And if you're in the construction industry, there's a bevy of, of, um, of schools out there that actually teach you a trade. I actually just, uh, visited the, um, I E B W. Yeah, they're a trade union and they actually have classes and a class was just starting, was twenty people in there. And I'll tell you what, I really was excited to see because it was mixed. So it was diversified twenty people. But no ladies, and I actually asked them about that and he says, hey, they come to every once in a while. But ladies can do this too. Ladies can be electricians because I know I hired one not too long ago. So, uh, but, uh, it was twenty people. Uh, everybody, so you have black, white, Asian, Latino, everybody was there. They got, they start at nineteen dollars an hour, which is, you know, it's, it's. But folks, they give you, they set you up with a job. So you got one day every two weeks in class for four years, but they keep you working during that whole time. It's apprenticeship. My thing is, so when you, when you graduate, you get a license as an electrician. See, I'm a businessman, folks. When you get a license and everybody listening out there, when you have a license, that's a license to start your own business. So if you're an electrician, a plumber, um, a pipe fitter, wha- whatever it is. And I'll tell you another one that, 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 um, people are forgetting about and is a mechanic. People forget about this man, uh, this person. The mechanic will always have the same job, always have a job just like a nurse. And we, damn right, but it's a hard job. And he'll get paid. He'll, he'll make money. This is one top, and I think it's ASC certified. So if you get ASC certified, that's it, man, that's your license. So let me finish this one more thing. So I wanna see us start. When we talk about generational wealth, I'm talking about business legacy. So if you have a license as a, as an electrician, go on to keep, continue on the job, learn what you can, save your money and take advantage of some of the startup dollars that are out there and start your own business. So once you have your own business, you get married, you have a kid, you have family and all that good stuff, then your son becomes an electrician. So now you have a business legacy that you can leave to your son, to your grandson, your great grandson, and it's a trade, folks. Electrician, electricity's not going anywhere.
You're right about that. We have, we have a few more minutes. Um, I, I, I want the voters to get a sense of, of who you are, uh, when, when they show up at the polls. So what are you advocating? You have economic development, it sounds like, um, protecting our communities, safe and affordable and affordable housing. How do you plan on bringing those to District Five if elected?
Well, I have to, um, what I'm gonna do is when I go, when I get elected, of course, I'm gonna talk, have a more intimate conversation with the sitting council people. You gotta sit with them. You gotta understand what's going on and you have to have them be honest and frank with you about our district. So I, I, I have to do that first and then I wanna meet with the, uh, the, uh, neighborhood leaders. So economic, education, anybody who wants to come and meet with me so that we can set up a plan. So that we can help this neighborhood move forward. But the, the great thing about our community is, is, it's not just East Tampa. I mean, you got Channel Side. Um, I talked to somebody from Channel Side and they're talking about walking to work. I was like, whoa, cuz I like that idea. I like getting up in the morning and walking to work.
But that's where the money's going.
Well, we'll see what happens. That's why I wanna get involved because it has to be balanced. So when people talk about East Tampa, I want East Tampa to be equal to South Tampa when they talk about it. That's what we have to get to. We have to start looking at equality and bringing our neighborhood up so that we never get forgotten. But you need a voice for that. And, um, I have a small business. I was just actually talking to somebody the other day. I started my business twenty-two years ago with a credit card and a dream. And I was talking to somebody the other day and, um, and we, we brought up the business legacy, uh, which is awesome. But, um, I actually started my own 401K. Twenty years ago. So that's what I'm talking about. So that 401K actually gives you immediate benefits because now you have, it reduces your taxable income. You see what I'm talking about? See, this is what, see, see, we're not seeing. We're not thinking about this.
Yeah.
So if you work in corporate America and they say that they're gonna match three percent, don't put three percent in there, put seven percent in there. So you got ten percent of your dollars before taxes going into your retirement.
Yeah.
See, that also reduces your taxable income. So we have to start thinking like that and this. See, these are the things that we, we don't know. But as I got into business and I, I have an economics degree from Boston University.
Okay.
So I've always been into finances and numbers. So when I got out there and I started my business, I was like, shoot, I'm gonna start saving for my retirement and it's gonna save me money while I'm making money. But that business, business, when I was in corporate America, I'd never forget, my boss came to me, I had a good job. I was working for a tobacco company in sales and it was, it wasn't commission, it was a nice, I had a company car, you know, you know, college guy and all that stuff. And um, um, they came to me and my boss gave me a two percent raise. So I calculated that and I was like, two percent. I, I, I looked at him and he looked at me and I looked at him and he looked at me and he looked at me and I looked at him. And I had to sign a document and I said, you know something? There's gotta be a better way.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a better way.
Be a better way. So when I started my business, I took the skills that I learned in sales at the tobacco company. It applied directly to starting your own business because look, people think that when you're in business, you, you, uh, you're not in sales. Hell, yeah, you're.
And, and, because I, I wanna make sure that we get all of your episodes in because we are about to get cut off with our time. How can people support you and follow you if they're looking to elect you as the next city councilman?
Okay, um, I actually have a website. It's called Albert Cook for City Council.
Okay.
And what I really need from folks is I need volunteers and I need dollars. Because folks, there's folks out there that are kicking my behind because they got so much money. So if you really believe in me and you believe in what I'm saying and you understand what I'm saying, hey, um, you can go to that website. There's a, a QR code there. Um, I actually have one as well. Um, and you can uh, uh, add money to my, my coffers, but.
He's an economic guy, so he, he knows numbers.
Hey, I wanna say thank you for bringing me on here. Heightens my energy. I mean, you guys are great, great questions.
We appreciate you for coming and hanging out with us.
Am I, am I yelling?
No one's louder than that one right there.
Well, we appreciate you coming and hanging with us. Terrence, we done did it again on a Tuesday night.
Yes.
I'm ready to go, bye.
Well, we can't, we can't just up and leave like that, but yeah, man.
We are live every Thursday. So actually, if you are live right now, we will have another episode tomorrow, Wednesday.
Yes.
At three PM. And then we're also gonna be live on our original time, Thursday at nine thirty in the morning. Our executive producer is wrapping me, Terrence.
We gotta go.
We gotta go, y'all. Make sure you follow Rooted in Progress on Spotify, Apple Podcast.